Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the February 26, 2009, meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kokowski had another commitment this morning, so I get to play chairman today. We'll start with the dog.
You get to do everything.
I forgot a quote.
Oh, my.
I can't think of the quote.
I'm sure you can make up one. Pretty dog. Oh, he's his last.
He's a real dog.
Yeah, right, yes.
You gonna sit down? Can you sit? Hey, buddy, can you sit? No, you don't sit.
He probably doesn't know what snapping his fingers means.
Our featured dog this week is a male boxer that was found in Georgetown in Alariah, two to three years old, great personality. Stop by our dog kennel, pick up a new friend. He'll be available, what, Saturday after 3 o'clock? You're beautiful.
At 9:45, we're going to have a presentation on Connect Ohio under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Yes, Mr. President. I do have a number of hiring issues to discuss with regard to Golden Acres, ongoing labor discussions also will be a topic, so I therefore request that we have an executive session at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today to do so. Both topics are allowable by the sunshine law, and I thought you'd like to be addressed that way, at least for this morning. Thank you.
Don't get used to it.
I won't.
Approve and waive the reading in the same for Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting minutes for February 18, childcare, and 19, 2009.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under solid waste, extend the contract in accordance with Resolution 07225 with Environmental Enterprises, Inc., Cincinnati, for household hazardous waste collection services for the 2009 to be paid from HHW account.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Approve grant request fundings, one, Oberlin City School in the amount of $23,538.50 to purchase school stadium bleachers made from 50% recycled materials, and Sheffield Lake City Schools in the amount of $26,000 to purchase materials made from recycled materials for all-weather track, project base two, and recycled carpet.
Mr. Billman?
Dan Billman, solid waste director. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Dan.
Do we have anybody from Oberlin? Okay, you might just welcome up right now, and then, Mr. Pelsick? We have two grant requests before you today, and both of them are very, very good requests. They've done all the paperwork, and it's proper, and the Oberlin City Schools are asking for money for the bleachers, and they need them very badly, as I understand it, and John Sroth, the Assistant Serpent Lieutenant, is here to talk to you about their grant, and then, right after that, Tim Pelsick from Sheffield Sheffield Lake would like to talk to you about their grant, which is for a running track and some carpet for their facilities.
First, I'd like to thank Dan for all his help with this, and thank you Commissioners for giving us some time this morning and consideration for our grant application. Oberlin City Schools has experienced a renaissance in our athletic program. Over the last two years, not only has our football team broken its longstanding losing streak with its first win last year, and actually a winning season this year, but all of our sports teams are seeing an increase in participation, and we've also been able to add some additional programs. Unfortunately, though, our facilities have been lagging. Our high school stadium facility, the visitors' bleachers were condemned over a decade ago and removed and replaced with some small portable units, which were sufficient when no one came to the games. But now that we have a more exciting program, we are starting to see, this year, we had our largest attendance in many, many years. We actually topped total athletic attendance before the end of the football season that we had for all of our athletic events the year before. So, we're asking today for a matching grant in order to purchase new bleachers for our visitor's side. Our high school home bleachers were actually moved from the original Langston Building on Main Street over to the high school facility in the late 60s, and are still in good shape and of good repair. But for our visiting fans from all over Lorraine County, we'd like to be able to provide some much nicer seating for them. This is a raised bleacher unit, similar to the product that you funded for Columbia Schools a few years ago. It will be almost 100% recycled materials, and the grant application details our timeline. And we also would like to welcome the Commissioners to the dedication of the facility at our first home football game in the fall.
Wonderful. Love to go. You guys are doing a lot of things out in Oberlin. Your superintendent's, what, in his second year now?
Third year.
Third year now.
Yes.
You guys are doing neat things with your new curriculum also out there, so.
Yeah, we're very excited about our science, technology, engineering, and math grant that we just received, a competitive grant from throughout the state, which is going to really provide a renaissance for our middle school technology program, and also our IV authorization for our high school, which will go into effect next year. And our middle years program and our primary years program will make Oberlin City Schools the only K-12 IV international backglow authorized district in the state.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Tim Pelsick from Sheffield Sheffield Lake Schools, I'm the business manager. This is Will Folger. He's our superintendent.
We'd like to thank the Commissioners for past support. Very appreciative. We started our program last year to try to improve some of our facilities, our athletic facilities especially, and we were lucky enough or fortunate enough, we've received some help from the Commissioners last year. It's broken up into several phases, several years. Last year, we took on the bleachers. They were about to be condemned, or unofficially were condemned. This year, we're looking to start on the track project, and that's why we're before you today. The track is basically an old six-lane cinder track. We've not had a home track meet in decades. Couldn't find anyone who could remember when the last home track meet was, which says something for it. We have tried to make do with recycled asphalt from Cocosing. They've helped us out, but we're trying to put in an all-weather track that the teams could use, that PE classes could use, and the community could use. And that's the one large part of this. Tim, if you want to address the other?
Yeah, just a small piece of it. We had approached you on trying to get some money to put some recycled carpet down in part of the high school gym. Our high school gym is used 24/7, unlike some of the newer schools where they would have an auxiliary gym, et cetera. All of our activities have to take place in that gym, including baseball. And we did just put some money into repairing and replacing part of the gym floor. That was rather expensive, but we have to drop down our batting cage for the baseball team, and that's going to be starting here in the next few weeks, where they actually will take batting practice in that gym. And we're trying to get some kind of a protection down so that the money that we spent is well-spent, and we don't start, you know, beating up that facility again.
Good program. I enjoyed coming last year when you invited us.
Yes, did attend that. We appreciate that.
So it was very nice. Thank you very much. Nice program. Be nice to have a track out there, walking in those cinders when it was all wet and cold out last year. Wasn't fun.
Yes, I know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
You need to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Well, as you've heard Commissioners, both of them are pretty good projects, and I would recommend approval on them. All the paperwork's done.
I'll second. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under transit, instruct clerk to advertise for bids for cutaway vans for the transit. Notice to be in the Chronicle March 2nd, 9th, and 16th, and bids to be open at 2:15 on March 27.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under the engineer award contract area Black Tap, Inc., sand dusting amount of $448,599.50 for the 2009 resurfacing program. Six bids were received on February 6th, this being the most responsive complying with specifications. Issue notice to proceed on or before April 1st, 2009, and complete on or before August 15. Engineer's estimate was $504,685. Authorized county administrator notify county auditor to release ret너ge at completion of project. Said award is contingent upon state grants approvals through OPWC. Funding for this project consists of 89% OPWC and 11% MVGT.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez, county administrator?
I have no additional comments. Just wanted, thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Press Peter?
Commissioners, I would like to discuss briefly two matters pending litigation with the Commissioners in the executive session.
Commissioners, report.
Yeah, sorry for missing last week. My daughter had surgery, but we're back in action this week. Had a busy week. Actually, we'll hear about Connect Ohio shortly. I attended that last week, representing the board with Commissioner Blair's assistant. But also, the County Commissioners Association, which I serve on a few committees, actually is starting to do really nice things, sort of like we've done here with the technology part of it. I was able to attend a meeting in Columbus for two and a half hours and never leave my office, so. Very informative as the large counties. We did have some medium-sized counties. There's just talking about the issues and where the stimulus package is going to affect us as county officials, so it was well-attended, well-run, and we plan on holding those at least monthly through our metropolitan affairs to handle with the large counties. Also, this week, there was a clean energy webcast that I was invited to that spoke about the stimulus money again, and where it's going with alternative energy. Former President Bill Clinton, Al Gore, T. Boone Pickens, who hosted it, Harry Reid, Nancy Pelosi, and a multitude of people throughout the industry. So, again, it was nice to do it by webcast, couple hours, and don't have to leave my office, so. Saving money.
That's good. That's really good. Thank you. Jim handed me a notice from Minnetmen Staffing, which is located on Middle Avenue in Alariah. It says labor is needed, first come, first served. It's for cleanup at Lorraine County Community College. Hal, if I turn this around, can you pick it up? I'm trying to see what he's doing, too. I suppose I shouldn't be so nosy. Did you want to comment, Tom?
That would be fine, Madam Commissioner. The insurance company that was here doing the extensive cleanup, and I say extensive because it was much larger than originally anticipated, is hiring local folks through the Minnetmen Network, who was awarded the bid from the insurance company. The first day, they actually brought workers in on buses from Cuyahoga County. After we learned of this, and Commissioner Kaylo was one of the first to learn of this, and he gave me a call, we engaged workforce development, the one-stop, and our folks to work with them to make sure that we gained these employment opportunities, which will last for several weeks for residents here in Lorraine County through one-stop and some advertising. And Vivian's been working hand-in-hand with them, and we've offered them assistance on several levels. So, these jobs aren't permanent, but they'll last for several weeks, and they're paying prevailing wage, so they're good, high-paying jobs for folks, and if they want to come out, they may get an opportunity. I understand 300 showed up this morning, and there may be, you know, additional folks that are necessary as they proceed with the work, because it's moving from building to building, and they'll need different level, different numbers of workers at different points in the project. And also, I guess under my comments, I should have said something, or either the Commissioners, and that's kind of kudos to the college for containing this issue, getting themselves up and running, and doing what they needed to do to get back in operation. While the fire wasn't hugely extensive, but it was damaging enough, it was a smoke damage that really took its toll, and I can't tell you how professional the staff out at the college has been. I've been in contact with them because, on behalf of the board, we offered resources and assistance and meeting rooms and whatever we could do to make sure that their seamless operation continued, but they have done one heck of a job out there in a very short period of time to make sure that people continue uninterrupted with their education.
They did a nice job within a week's time. Excuse me. Shirley?
I just wanted to say, there was a notice about that out of the vocational school yesterday, and you might add that it's $27 an hour. You have your own protective boots. They supply goggles and hard hats, and you have to work $12 shifts.
Very good, Shirley. You read the flyer.
She read the fine print.
Yeah, I spoke. They called the other day.
I'm not a fine, though.
I spoke to them the other day, and we're trying to find a way to get through our workforce, so. Nice job, Vivian Alexander and Mr. Cordez.
Is that it?
Yes.
Yep.
Boarding correspondence?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning before we go to our Connect Ohio presentation?
Citizen?
That's anyone, Chuck.
Including me, right? Anybody?
Yeah, I guess.
Especially you.
Chuck Becker, 2028, Home and Drive, Lorraine. Suggestion, on a four-day, 32-hour week with rotating days off, so we still have five-day service. The union should renegotiate their contract so some of the union members could be recalled back to work. All employees will still have a livable wage and benefits. Possible in time with the help from the stimulus package and hopefully the passing of the half-percent sales tax in November, we can get past the downturn in the economy. Maybe better times will return, and the safety forces and county services will be back to normalcy as in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Very good comments. Anyone else? It's on you, Dave.
On me?
You're welcome.
Jim, do you want to turn that over?
Well, first of all, I want to thank the Commissioners for agreeing to see me this morning and giving me this opportunity to take about 10 minutes to give you an overview of the Connect Ohio initiative, specifically what we're going to be doing in Lorraine County and the other counties throughout the state. I also want to thank Teresa for getting me on the schedule. So as soon as it comes up there, we'll get started.
It's not up there? Is it loaded?
Not yet. Ernie's coming up, so.
I'll wait for Ernie to get a key up here for me. Also, while we're waiting, Commissioner Kaylo had the opportunity to attend our No Child Left offline donation last week. It was a great event at the Boys and Girls Club of Lorraine. Governor Strickland was on hand to make the presentation, and we'll have to do more of those type of events in Lorraine County and across the state in weeks to come.
It was a nice event, and especially the young man, Anthony Robinson, I believe, who just is taking his bar test right now.
Yeah.
Came through the system of Boys and Girls Clubs. It was very nice.
Great success.
It was nice the governor recognized him.
Yeah, and it really shows, I think, what the Boys and Girls Clubs, you know, can do with the community and with the fostering of the children, and what they can achieve once they get out into the real world, so to speak. All right, well, like I said, I want to give an overview of Connect Ohio, and specifically what we're going to be doing in Lorraine County. Along with the overview, I want to talk specifically about the services that we will be providing. So first of all, what is Connect Ohio? Connect Ohio is a public-private partnership between the state of Ohio and our parent organization called Connected Nation. Now, Connected Nation is specifically focused on increasing technology access and literacy. The Connect Ohio initiative, what it's designed to do is to drive broadband adoption in the state, both for consumers and for businesses. It's part of Governor Strickland's broadband initiative. As you know, Governor Strickland has really been a leader among the governors in terms of broadband, and in general, for technology. In 2007, under executive order, he created the Ohio Broadband Council, which really is designed to be a council to oversee all the broadband activities that the state undertakes, and in December of 2007, created Connect Ohio with the mission of driving broadband adoption in the state. Now, how we do that is we work with all the providers of broadband, we work with technology companies, we work with local government officials, business leaders, community leaders, to drive broadband adoption. We're focused on what we call the five As of technology expansion. We're focused on availability, making sure broadband is available to everyone, making sure people are aware of it, focusing on the applications, all the different things that you can do with broadband today. You think about the normal ones. Hey, I can email, I can go online, I can get information and so forth, but there's all types of applications in agriculture, in technology. There's just so many things out there, and the whole world is moving online, slowly but surely, and it's not really slowly, it's actually happening very quickly. So, the whole initiative here is designed to bridge that digital divide between people who have broadband and those who do not, because the more our daily lives move online, if you're not part of that community, you're being left out of society. All right, very quickly, what is broadband? The FCC definition for broadband is speeds of, are speeds of 768 kilobits per second or faster. That's minimal broadband. Now, for most of us that have broadband at home through cable or DSL, you're getting speeds much faster than that. You're getting probably 1.5, 2, 3, 4, up to 5 meg speeds at home. It's always-on connectivity, it enables the highest quality internet services, and it's the bridge for crossing that digital divide. In terms of technologies, there's a multitude of technologies for delivering broadband. You've got digital subscriber line, cable, fixed wireless, satellite, wireless networks, and we really don't care what the delivery mechanism is. We're agnostic when it comes to that. All we want is for individuals and for businesses to have access to broadband. That's the key. Why does it matter? Well, it's very obvious. First of all, economic development and innovation is critical for the state, for the counties, and for the United States. I mean, surprisingly, with broadband, we invented the technology, but yet we're 15th in the world when it comes to broadband adoption. This is just another example of technology where the United States invents it, someone else runs with it, and they're jumping ahead of us. So it's very critical, not just for Ohio, but for the United States, to drive broadband adoption and the use of broadband applications. And it's also a major quality of life issue. More and more of our daily lives are going online, so, you know, if you don't have access, you're being left out. And of course, each one of the sectors, you know, benefits directly. I talked about economic development, but even for government, more e-government capabilities, more transactions online, more information being made available to the public, so it's very critical. All right, next, I want to talk specifically, and I'm going to show some maps of Lorraine County and some of the research we did for Lorraine County, but the services that we will be offering. First of all, we've done broadband mapping of the entire state, showing where broadband is currently available and where there are areas of opportunity, where we need to provide broadband service. We've also done telephone research of both businesses and consumers across the state. I already talked about No Child Left offline. One of the things I really want to talk specifically about today is the creation of what we call e-community leadership teams. These are teams of local business and community officials that we want to bring together to help them identify potential projects in the county that hopefully can be funded through potentially the stimulus package or other sources of funding that can move the county forward in terms of broadband. And then, of course, ongoing advocacy, and I call agitation as well, you know, doing everything that we can to keep broadband at the center and a focus of the state. Okay, first of all, I'm going to show you a map, and on the map, it lists all the different providers of broadband in Lorraine County. I've got them listed here, from Century Tel, Time Warner, Windstream. We've got a couple of wireless providers as well. Now, these are fixed wireless, point-to-point wireless providers, North Coast Communications, WOW is the name of the other company, and then Cox Cable and Verizon Wireless. And actually, the map for Lorraine County looks pretty good. If you look on the map, all the areas in the pinkish color or the mauve-ish color, those are areas where broadband is currently available. So really, the only area where there are issues in terms of availability are in the southern portions of the county and in the southeast portions of the county. So those are some areas that hopefully, with the stimulus funding, can be targeted, and we can provide ubiquitous coverage in some of those areas in the southern part of the county. But overall, in terms of having access to broadband, things in Lorraine County look pretty good. Research. The first slide I'm going to show you here, this is for the state of Ohio. We don't have county-level research yet for business, but this was very eye-opening to me, and this is one reason why I think this was so important to Governor Strickland. Only 59% of Ohio's businesses subscribe to broadband, which was, you know, just eye-opening to me, as I said. But what was even more eye-opening was 34% of businesses don't even have internet service, which, you know, in this day and age, is very surprising. So hopefully, we want to drive that to 100%. Now, the next couple of slides I'm going to show you are residential surveys specifically for Lorraine County, comparing Lorraine County to the state of Ohio. The first one compares Lorraine in terms of having a computer at home, having internet service at home, which is a combination of dial-up or broadband, and then finally, having broadband service at home. And as you can see, in terms of having a computer at home, pretty much right at the state average. Same thing for internet service at home, and in terms of broadband service at home, slightly above the state average at 60%. And if you take a look at the map, the next slide here I'm going to show you, you can see that mostly the greater Cleveland metropolitan area, Cleveland, Lorraine, Alariah metropolitan area, you know, you're looking at broadband adoption around that 60% level. We have a couple of outliers, Lake County and Medina County, which are close to 70% broadband adoption. Statewide average, as I said, 55%. Now, this is an important slide, because there is disparity based on incomes in terms of access to broadband. You can see that household income's above $35,000, the broadband adoption rate is about 77%. Meanwhile, household income's less than $35,000, the broadband adoption rate is only 12%. So affordability is an issue when it comes to having access to broadband for many families, specifically in Lorraine County, but it's pretty consistent in some of the more urban counties across the state. You can see the state average, it's about 32% for families under $35,000. So Lorraine County is, you know, well below that penetration rate when it comes to broadband adoption. Talked about No Child Left offline. This initiative is really key in addressing some of those affordability issues, because it's probably not practical to give every single family that can't afford it internet service at home at this juncture, providing the computer, providing the monthly recurring charge, but what we can do is fund some of these, what we call, community technology centers, like a Boys and Girls Club, like our libraries, where people can go, they can use computers, they can use broadband service, even though they don't have it at home. So everybody does have access, even though they may not have access at their home. Eventually, we want to have access, we want to have, you know, everyone have access at home, but right now, of course, with the budget considerations and the current economic conditions, it may not be practical at this juncture. All right, now, the e-community leadership teams. As I mentioned before, we want to bring together leaders from nine different sectors in the community, from K through 12, through healthcare, libraries, you see them all listed there, agriculture. We want to bring them together in about a month, give them an overview of the program, just like I'm doing today with all of you. And then, in about a month from that meeting, we want to bring them together and have them do an exercise, what we call a benchmark assessment exercise. Each one of the sector leaders will be asked to benchmark, where are they today with broadband? As I mentioned before, we want to bring together leaders from nine different sectors in the community, from K through 12, through healthcare, libraries. You see them all listed there, agriculture. We want to bring them together in about a month, give them an overview of the program, just like I'm doing today with all of you. And then, in about a month from that meeting, we want to bring them together and have them do an exercise, what we call a benchmark assessment exercise. Each one of the sector leaders will be asked to benchmark, where are they today with broadband? How are they using it? Why are they using it? Then, we want them to think out two years. Where would they like to be in two years in terms of broadband, in terms of speeds, in terms of applications? You know, where do they want to be in two years? And then, finally, how do they get there? And the whole purpose of this exercise is to be able to identify potential projects in the county for each one of the sectors and then for the county as a whole. And then, hopefully, the next step will be to get those projects funded and get those projects implemented. So, the next steps, we want to identify leaders from each one of those sectors. And what I will do, commissioners, is I'll put together a list of leaders for each one of those sectors that I identified. I'll get that over to you. You can take a look at it, make additions, changes, what have you. And then, we need to schedule the first meeting. And one of the things I want to find out as well is what would be a preferred location for these meetings to take place. And with that, we'll conduct the kickoff meeting and get the ball rolling here in Lorraine County, and hopefully, put together a very solid plan, identify some very good projects, and hopefully, get those projects funded and implemented to move the county forward. So, with that, I wanted to see if there's any questions.
Wonderful program, David. It was very nice the governor speaking about it last week, and you're right, we need to get everybody online. I mean, that's where our future lies.
Yes, absolutely.
Commissioner? Mr. Cordes?
Yeah, David, just, there may be some assistance out there. About seven years ago, maybe a little less than that, we mapped the county's resources. We had a great big study done. So, we have materials already prepared that identify the areas in Lorraine County that were not served adequately. Some of those things probably need to be freshened, but we do have quite an extensive report. We took the initiative on this several years ago to map Lorraine County's broadband access. We also mapped the businesses in relation to their access, I think, to the...
A little bit, but it's mostly residential.
Right, to the broadband access. So, that may be a starting point. We may need to dust that off and be able to freshen that rather than reduplicate work that we've already done over the years. With a lot of the changes that were going on, we really didn't make the broadband initiatives a priority, but we have been monitoring that in the rural part of the counties to continue to see that those residents were provided the access. I do have a question, though. The older higher educational institutions are on that super-high-speed Internet.
The OSC net.
Right. And I was wondering if the governor is going to extend that and try to, I won't say improve, that's a bad word, because it's a great network, but improve the access to that network to hospitals, government buildings, libraries, because right now, it's pretty restricted simply to educational institutions. And I think that it's being, you know, under-exploited with regard to the capability that could be provided more fully to government, other educational school districts, libraries, and of course, to business to be able to compete more fully. Is there any plans for that in what we're doing here? Because while the broadband is wonderful, anybody that's used that other network will understand even the limitations of broadband.
Yeah, I know it is being considered. There's nothing definitive at this point, but I know that that is being looked at as a potential, you know, to open it up, probably not completely, but, you know, potentially to include some other organizations being able to participate in that. Yes, and that is a great network, and it's a real asset for the state of Ohio.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we could make that, once this is formed, we could make that one of our issues to put before the governor, that we'd like to see greater access to that, to that wonderful service. And also, I would, I would offer that we can obviously do those meetings and work on those groups right here on the fifth floor in the...
I was going to say, it was a whole kind of... That'd be great.
We have adequate facilities. We have great technology. The board here has embraced technology and the Internet. We also have the ability to do webinars and Internet... Help me around.
Video conferencing?
Video conferencing, thank you. I've just had a little bit of a brain stall. So, this way, we don't have to drag everybody down here. We can actually hook up around the county that way, and we may get more people involved than ordinarily we would because of busy schedules. So, I'm looking forward to sitting down with you and on behalf of the commissioners, putting together what you think is an adequate team, and moving forward, we can coordinate with you and work on it together.
Excellent. That would be great. Fantastic. And I can tell you, you do have very nice, you know, technology here. It's some of the best I've seen, so.
I think that, that what you spoke about was one of the subjects of the summit from the Alliance, and I just have to say this, Perry Sabaté was one of the presenters at that time. She's now the Budget Director for the Governor. So, Lorraine County was out in front once again.
Absolutely. Want to keep it out in front, right?
Thank you. Thank you very much, David.
Motion to move an executive session is outlined by the county administrator and county prosecutor.
Second. Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair? Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Alaria.